Okay, we're going to call to order the regular city council meeting of July 8th, 2024. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Bixson.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
Hauser.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
King.
Here.
Sage.
Here.
Trent.
Here.
Thank you. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming on this beautiful night. First, we have public comments, scheduled, non-scheduled. So first, I think we have an update from Frank Riewald and Sons on their plans for the Lions Park. Councilmember Jones, were you going to?
Yeah, Frank had a conflict.
Councilmember Jones.
And so I will read his email and quickly pass a few. Pass these down. Sorry, sorry. I forgot I was first up. Okay.
No worries.
Got it. So we've been moving forward with renovating the Lions Park, which, if everybody knows, it's right over there by the Riewald headquarters. And Riewald does own that property, but they lease it to the DDA at no charge. So I'm going to read just the highlights of what we would be doing there, what he would be doing. This is completely funded by Frank Riewald. It will not cost the city any money. We will continue to maintain the park, and I've talked to the DPW about that. So they will continue to empty the trashcans. And I believe the lawn is mowed and paid for by the DDA. They are going to install a gazebo that's approximately 30 by 15 feet with open sides for maximum view of the creek. They're going to trim the brush, if this is all approved. They will trim the brush at the creek, similar to what they did at their headquarters, so that it will enhance the view. The gazebo that is there will stay for now. It can be moved if there is a Phase Two, if it's needed for seating space. They would like to move some of the shrubs to the west side of the park, so that it would be opened up a little bit more to downtown, and there'd be a view all the way past the mill and up the hill to the Main Street. His idea would be, at some point, you know, the public library would do things there. They already have, they have storytimes there, maybe have a single singer there, doing some sort of bigger events with the Rochester Mills. If there was toilets needed, those would be provided by any group that was using the park. The electrical will be run from the city line by the bridge, go to the gazebo to provide basic power and lights for any equipment that might be used. And then, he just said that it will be funded. And how it's going to be funded, part of it will come from the money that he committed to the city for the condos, the $50,000. I believe that was going to go to another park. So his goal would be to move it to this park instead. And then Phase Two, they would have to figure out funding for that. But we would just have to see how this one rolled out as far as maybe adding some seating, umbrellas, that type of thing, and hope that the park, that if all goes well, is approved, that it would be started in early August. Do you have anything to add next? Because I know you met with him.
I do. So it's important, because Frank came before and asked to not put the money in Elizabeth Park, but to put it, and it was denied. So he's asking again to use that money. And you all know, we're about to do Elizabeth Park at some point. Don't know how much it costs, don't know what. Mosheri had committed a portion to Elizabeth Park, but he never pulled a billing from it, so he's not on the hook for it. Frank indicates in further in here that Mr. Mosher wants to participate, but he wants to use that commitment from Elizabeth Park also. So that's up to council. It's part of a special project ask. The money was supposed to go to Elizabeth Park. Frank was putting in the sidewalks, and Mr. Mosheri was putting in the water wall, which we're never going to do that. So it's up to council if you want to let him switch his funding to this park.
Now, would there be a vote we would take now?
You could, if you wanted to.
Okay.
Councilmember Trent.
Yeah. I'm trying to figure out, I guess, maybe, I'm just not sure what I'm looking at. It looks like that the gazebo is a cover, was calling a gazebo, is this covered area?
Well, the gazebo is already there.
Yeah.
So it's over on the other side of the sidewalk, towards the parking lot of the mill.
I can help with that. It's a shade structure over the amphitheater. The gazebo stays.
Okay, so it's not taking up too much space, but enough space to have a band or something?
Yes, so it'd be the same exact amphitheater space.
Because I'm trying to look at the measurements.
The actual, I believe, if I'm correct, the cement that's already there, it's not getting bigger than that.
Correct.
There already is a space for someone to perform. He just will be covering it.
Covering it, okay. Okay, so it looks like it's a wooden-type structure.
Correct.
Kind of like the ones at the Sugar Maple Grove.
Oh, okay, it's kind of simple and minimalist.
It will be open on all sides, so you can see the creek.
That's cool. I like that. And then, but there's sketches, though. It looks like umbrellas across the sidewalk. I'm not sure.
I think that would be like Phase Two, longer. If things go well, it's being used, and there's funding that would be available. There'd be more.
Correct.
And then, who, now, who owns it? Did he say he owns?
Frank Riewald.
He owns this, even though.
It's permanent easement, that we could use it, so.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, that was all I had. I like the idea. I always wanted something, a covered structure there. I always felt like that would be an excellent thing to build.
Councilmember Sage?
Yeah, quick question. So the money that was dedicated to Elizabeth Park was based on which project?
The condos.
The condos. The condos.
Which was quite a while ago, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that goes away. We don't get that benefit. But this one would be tied to which other development, then?
Mosheri said that he wanted to participate.
No, Frank's portion. Just this.
He would pick up the difference between what he committed to on the sidewalks at Elizabeth and whatever this costs.
Oh, okay.
So he did say in here that anything over what he had committed to, he would eat that.
Okay. Council, Mayor Protemsalvia.
Thank you. So, City Manager, this is a little confusing in terms of, like, what is the process, and what are we really being asked here? So I guess, are we, is this going to go to Planning Commission, or is this just asking us, council, do we agree with repurposing that funding, and then Frank can build kind of whatever he wants here based on this scope? What is the process? Does it come back to the city?
I mean, if he would have been here tonight, he would have asked, will you approve this plan with pergola, wherever, some extra trees, move in some trees, and then let me flip my funding from Elizabeth Park to here? That would be his ask. No, it doesn't have to go to the Planning Commission.
Can we see some documents? I mean, okay, this is a picture. I don't, I don't, there's no numbers here, other than elevations.
I think he maybe needs to come back.
Yeah, I'd.
I'm fine with that. I mean, he was on the agenda tonight, so he just asked me if I would do an overview.
I mean, I support this. It looks cool, but.
And maybe we need to tell him what we need for his coming back.
We can bring him to the next meeting. Councilmember Hauser.
Oh, I think.
Oh, Councilmember King?
Yes, first. I just have a quick question. Looking at the drawings, so there's the, kind of the main bike path or sidewalk, and then, as you approach the seating area, there, it looks like the sidewalk comes down. Does that allow for handicap access there, or some sort of like?
No, it's a bad grade there.
Oh, is that what this, like, T-shaped path is?
Because have you seen it? There's like, it's kind of an amphitheater.
It looks like a A there, doesn't it? Like, just like one spot.
Yeah.
I was just wondering if there is going to be an area where, you know, we should accommodate that.
Councilmember Hauser.
Sure. I, listen, I think it's a fantastic idea, and I like everything about it, to the extent that it enhances and spruces up an area that probably could use a little bit of attention. I think, for me, though, I would like to just hear from Mr. Riewald and get a better understanding of some of the numbers. The issue about the condos preceded when I was on City Council or even Planning Commission, and so I'm not familiar enough as to what was allocated for Elizabeth Park versus now. And just to have a better understanding, so I can definitively 100% get behind a project, I'm probably 85% behind already. Is that fair?
That's fair.
Do you want to circle back around with him?
Yep.
And then maybe mention the handicap and the understanding of the funding.
Absolutely. That's all I'm, I didn't think this would fly this easy. He should be here to sell his own case. It's his property, so we shouldn't speak for him. But we wanted to give you an update, so we didn't forget about it. Councilwoman Jones has been working with him, try to keep him going here, so.
Right.
Anyway, we have time, because he didn't want to start until August.
Councilmember Hauser?
And one other question is, I certainly don't want Mr. Riewald to have to spend thousands and thousands of dollars on drawings, but maybe a couple more photos with elevations to better identify the area Councilperson King was talking about, and some of the canopies and stuff, I think would go a very long way into getting unanimous.
Agreed.
Very good. Thank you for the presentation.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I know it was last, got a last minute.
It was a wonderful one. You practiced. You did well.
Is a last minute is difficult.
Yeah.
All right, on to a legislative update from our state senator, Mike Weber. Senator Weber, welcome to, back to Rochester, City Rochester.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bixson, and city council members. Michael Weber, I do serve with the State Center for the Ninth District, which includes Rochester, Rochester Hills, Oakland Township, Troy, Sterling Heights, Utica, and Shelby Township. And as a former city council member myself, I try to come and do, you know, periodic updates, try to maybe do a couple times a year legislative updates, and try to focus on what I would want to know if I was in your shoes, because I used to be in your shoes. So, we did, we did just pass the budget, and as a reminder, the budget doesn't go into effect till October 1st. But just some of the highlights, in terms of revenue sharing, we did see a decent increase in revenue sharing in this budget, about 13.6% increase. It was distributed via a formula that I won't necessarily go into. I will say, as a co-chair of the MML Caucus, we were disappointed, even though it was a good increase. So obviously, we're happy about that. That's, you know, the glass half full, glass half empty, is we were pushing for the Revenue Sharing Trust Fund, and we think that that would create more certainty. So I can go through that a little bit more later on. But there is a bill package passed the House with 104 votes, and we're hoping still by the end of this year, we can get that into statute for next budget cycle. The House budget actually did incorporate the Revenue Sharing Trust Fund into their proposal, but the end result was, was this formula that was used. In terms of infrastructure and roads, we did, you know, see about a $36 million increase for, for projects in terms of, you know, the Act 51 formula. I will say that we are, as a, as a state, we're paying more in debt service than we have in the past. We were actually able to take some general fund dollars and put it towards our federal match in order to get the federal match. But a lot of that has to do with the bonding and paying down the bonding debt payments. And so, we were able to hit our federal match, but only because we were able to, to use some more general fund dollars in that regard. And then, lastly, on the budget, and, you know, kind of fingers crossed on this, you will see in the, in the budget proposal, some dollars for the Rochester Community House. Obviously, the caveat there is, the budget is not signed yet, so, but I'm very hopeful that, obviously, that will be incorporated into the final budget proposal. So stay tuned for that. And obviously, I think that that's very good news. I was at the State of the City. I know everybody's very excited about that project. And so, if we can save our local tax dollars in terms of bonding for that, obviously, that's, that's good.
Oh, I respect that.
Back to, in terms of legislation, back to the Revenue Sharing Trust Fund, obviously, this would be, in terms of the, you know, the statutory piece of it, it would take a portion of the general sales tax and put it in a restricted fund. So it wouldn't be something that municipalities would have to try to, you know, lobby for every year. Obviously, when, when things are going, you know, slowly as a state, obviously, some of that money would, would be lower, but ultimately, it would provide greater certainty. So we're still pushing in, in the Senate to try to get that bill package passed. I'm working in a bipartisan basis with Senator Jeremy Moss, the other side of the aisle, who has the other bill, and he was a member of the Southfield City Council, so we both come from council backgrounds. And so we're working on that bill package. On another note, locally, we have been working, Representative Tisdale and I are working on legislation to rename a section of Rochester Road from Tinkin' to M59 after former Congressman William S. Brumfield. And so, that has been a bill packet, or a bill that's been introduced by Senator McMurro in the past, and I introduced it when I was in the State House. We do have some traction on it, and that Rep. Tisdale's bill did pass the House, and so we're just trying to get it through the Senate here. But that's something that I know the family's been watching, and certainly, I know in Rochester Hills, the Rochester Hills Museum, they have a lot of his papers and, and that kind of thing. So I think that would be a help to our area, just to commemorate him. In terms of sound walls, I don't know if that's quite as big an issue in Rochester as, as in some of the other communities, but we do have legislation. It's my bill, Senate Bill 643. We mirrored it after legislation in Minnesota, and essentially, it would just put a fund together that the state, that the state could put within the MDOT budget, some dollars set aside that municipalities could try to go after in terms of sound mitigation. As you know, you know, there's a lot of criteria, particularly federal criteria, for sound walls. So some of the areas are able to, you know, get, get the approval. Obviously, others aren't. So this would put that aside, you know, for, for some of those funds. And then, lastly, you know, we were talking about the debt, and bonding debt. I am a cosponsor of Senate Bill 699, which would ensure that all transportation debt services paid out MDOT's portion of the Act 51 formula. So we think if that bill was enacted, it would ensure over $30 million more in road funding for locals each year. So trying to take that off the top, or not, instead of off the top, obviously, off of MDOT's portion of it, because they're the ones that are making the decision in terms of the bonding. Lastly, for residents here at home, for more information and to sign up for our monthly E! News, please visit SenatorMichaelWeber.com or call our office at 517-373-0994.
Very good. Questions, Mayor Protemsalvia.
Well, I, obviously, Senator Weber, I'm just thrilled with your announcement, and we are going to be just waiting until that budget is signed. But thank you. Thank you for representing the residents of Rochester, as well as the greater Rochester area, so well. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll, when we, when we know that, we'll try to get a message to Nick or through to the council as well. But, yeah, we'll be watching for that.
We won't spend it till we hear.
Well, and then, yeah, and then we will work on that process, because as I, as I found last year, that, you know, that's a process to kind of continue to, to kind of shepherd it through, to make sure it gets, obviously, where it needs to go, so.
Yeah.
Any further comments?
I don't know. Yeah, there might be one there. Is that a?
Yeah, I think that's just for public, for our public comment.
Somebody has a hand up.
Thank you.
Well, is it?
Maybe not.
Brian, is there a question for the senator, or does that person have a comment?
I believe it was a comment that was earlier.
Okay, so not for the senator?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Thank you for the good work. Mr. Banda, did you want to, we have a police, police dog. Do you want to?
Is he still here?
Yeah, he's out in the hall, I think.
Bring him on in. Yes, I think Chief George, we are going to.
New officer.
Recognize our new officer, our police dog, his handler.
John is running the meeting.
Mike, you didn't, that's not what you do, right? So.
Oh.
Yeah, here we go.
You're up.
He was nervous. He was nervous. Come on.
Come on and introduce our puppy here.
So this is Maverick. Maverick is about a year and a half old, from the Czech Republic. He's a German shepherd.
Wow.
He's trained in, he's trained in narcotics, tracking, area searches, building searches, apprehension, and we're working on obedience.
Nice. Welcome to Maverick.
Well, he had a long plane ride, so maybe, you know.
Czech Republic, wow.
Yeah.
How come the Czech Republic just?
Well, he's from Pennsylvania. We got him from accounting Pennsylvania, and they brought him over from, I believe, he was from the Czech Republic.
Wow. That's interesting. You don't have enough dogs.
Maverick.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah. Nice to meet you, Maverick.
Thanks for coming over.
Maverick.
Thank you for your commitment, too. I know it's a, it's a big deal, and we do appreciate it. So he's safe with the dog, and you at the home there.
The dog lives with you now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He goes, okay, let's go home, boss.
Thank you, guys.
Welcome, Maverick.
All right, now, Brian, we have a comment from six, number 88, 651.
Yes, if the caller would like to unmute themselves.
Hi, Jane Turner here.
Welcome, Ms. Turner.
I have a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, first of all, back in August, when you were looking for committee members, I went in and went and paid my taxes and volunteered for the compensation committee.
Yeah, we have not.
And I was quite shocked when.
Yeah, we have not.
I was shocked from May, when it wasn't fall, because I was told back in August it was fall.
No, it's not.
So I have since gone in and volunteered.
Okay, well, we appreciate that. We're still in the process of going through, we're getting some information from administration and going through that process. So that's, that's, it's.
Is there an application that I have to fill out? I wasn't told that I was supposed to.
We took names, and I figured that on the council.
No, we got, we got your name.
There were several that were.
And I have previous experience.
Okay, yeah, we have your name. We have a number of names. We just haven't formed the committee yet.
Okay, don't wait too long. I might be dead.
All right, we better get on.
No, you're going to outlive us all, I think.
Yeah.
Already have.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Okay, bye. Oh, boy. Okay, next is the approval of the minutes. Consideration means the regular meeting of June 24th. I think I've talked to a couple council people who table this. Councilmember Trent?
Well, I, I got information that I was supposed to have changes tonight, to say what they are.
If you want, if you want, you can say what they are, or just send them to the clerk.
If, if there's not many, you can bring them to the table now and let me know if there's.
Well, I suppose about seven or eight.
Yeah, maybe, maybe just send them to her.
It's, I do it.
Do we need a motion to table it?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, so we'll have this meeting, those minutes, and hopefully, this meeting's minutes at the next.
Yeah, they're kind of minor, but they're just, yeah, okay, too much to go over right now. Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is approval of the consent agenda. First is the appointment of election workers for the August 6, 2024 primary election for early voting, early voter tabulation, absentee counting board, and election day and receiving board. I think I received my absentee ballot, so I think it's that time again. Next is the consideration to approve the trick-or-treat downtown event. Next is consideration to approve the Rochester posed event. And next is consideration to approve the Consumers Energy Family Fun Day. I assume that means the electricity works that day. Counsel.
I'll just.
Motion?
Yeah.
Motion by Councilmember Trent?
Please support it.
Supported by Councilmember Hauser. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. We do not have old business or table items tonight. We do not have any public hearings. Onto legislative deliberation. First is consideration of rental property ordinance amendment, Section 12-251, second reading and adoption. Counsel. Mayor Protemsalvia.
So I'd like to make a motion to, to move this forward for second reading and adoption, which is regarding the rental property code amendment and the proposed zoning code amendment.
All right, this is second reading adoption.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Motion by Mayor Protemsalvia.
Support.
Supported by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is consideration of the zoning ordinance, Section 1103, 1303.
No, that's, that's what I just learned.
She said that.
You did both together?
Correct.
Thank you. Sorry, I did not hear that.
Thank you.
Next is reports in regular business. Is a consideration of revolution to use and display of a commemorative street name of Old Town Road. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Back a little while ago, we honored the passing of Mr. Ed Kane, who was 50s, over 50 years with the post office, a good friend of Rochester. And it's, we've been working with the folks at the post office, and we were kind of on our own. So we decided, what can we do to make a Ed Kane Lane commemorative thing? So our goal was to, we couldn't change this name of Old Town, but a lot of communities put a parasitic sign, they're called, that you put a blue sign underneath the city's green sign, and it would say it. But the post office got a hold of me and said, we want to do it on our own side, the driveway that goes in front of, inside on their property. I went up there today, the sign's hurdy up, so it says Ed Kane Lane. It's green. We would rather have it be blue, to sort it differentiate, so people don't think it's a street. So we'd be glad to change it to blue and make it a, like a little more pizzazzzy sign, if you will. So if council's good with that, we would do that. They wanted to get up there quickly and did. It's, it's a one-way drive, so it's right when you come in on the one-way drive, you turn right, it says Ed Kane Lane. So, but we'd be glad to do, work with, we can get our own sign made, blue, which we would do normally for signs like that. So, council's wish.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. R. Patty, do you have any preference, blue or green?
Okay.
Good. So do we need a motion on that? Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, so in your packet today was a resolution. It's called a resolution approving use and display of proposed commemorative street name of, and I had put in here Edward Kane Lane, but if it's Ed Kane Lane, happy to have that resolution pass, and I'll get a fresh one to the clerk with the, with that correction. It's just some whereas's that City Manager Banda essentially recited. And then I just posed to the, put in there the Section 48-121 is the authorizing section for city council to do this. So I believe it's appropriate to pass a resolution as presented.
Is there a motion to do that?
I don't know.
A motion by Councilmember Trent?
Support.
Supported by Councilmember Sage. Mayor Protemsalvia.
I just wanted to clarify, Pat, if you could clarify, do you prefer Ed or Edward? How do you want this to read? I think that's important.
Well, he was employed as Edward. He served as Edward. He was buried as Edward.
Let's make it Edward. Sounds like Edward.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you, and, uh, Mr. Kane is well deserved.
Absolutely.
This award. So thank you. Thank you, Pat, for coming. Thank you. Uh, next is consideration of Rochester, Ra-Ra, to construct a hammock park adjacent to their building. City Manager?
So, for those of you that know David Word, as David comes up, David's a creative soul, and, um, I've been working with him for about a year and a half on a couple different things, including a big mural on the back of the building. When we talk about it, David's like, that's some great space that a lot of people go by, biking and walking and hiking and running, and it's kind of, we planted some trees there in the past. Some of them didn't make it. It's, it's pretty wet and dry back there, so. He had shown me a bunch of different ideas, and it started on the south side of the trail, kind of up in the woods, a hammock park, and then we talked about all the public safety aspects, et cetera, and David came back, so I got a better idea. So on the south side of the trail, he'll go over this, um, but I think it's a really cool idea. Their posts, they're not, I'll, I'll steal your thunder, David, you go.
David, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for having me here. Uh, do you have the presentation available?
I, I didn't load it up. Did you bring yours?
I have it on my computer.
Jeremy, can you switch them in there? Or Anthony?
We got a couple tech, uh, tech geeks here tonight.
Or Alec, or?
It's, uh, was, was.
Not us, right?
Right.
I think, I don't know, was it all in the packet?
It was in the packet.
Where the pictures in? Okay.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, it's in the packet, David, so I think Brian might be able to put it up.
For the, um, hammock park presentation and put it up on the.
I have a question, though.
He'll do it, yep.
Mr. Mayor.
We have a question.
We have a going.
I hope it's in color, because.
Yes, it's in color, yeah.
Yeah.
That makes a difference.
Before, before we get started, Councilmember Trent, you had a question?
Yeah. I just have a question to clarify. It's, and I'm looking at the aerial view. Is it, is you, do we, who owns the land in that strip along the trail?
So it is the city's easement there.
Okay, and starting from the, um, uh, connection of Pink, Pink Creek Trail and where they meet at, um, Clinton River Trail?
Correct, so.
Okay, it starts there, because I was just jogging there the other day, like, seeing the, yeah, okay.
So it would end up being in the, the longer portion of the building. Did you see, can you see the aerial view from?
Yeah, I do, I do. I just want, I was thinking, I, I thought.
We all have this in front of us, so if you want to go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so the first page there, that's just a couple of examples of other cities that have, uh, presented hammock parks to their councils, and ours obviously wouldn't be the covered tree area, but it would be similar to the one on the left in the, in the first drawing. Uh, Jim, our maintenance supervisor, has already, uh, went out and, you know, scoped the land, made sure that, and speaking with Nick and, uh, Mistig, it is safe to go ahead and dig the posts. So we would use twelve-foot posts, uh, put them in the ground, paint them, uh, the tops of them, we would have, uh, solar lighting, and then every other one, we would do a shade sale on, so that people could, you know, sit in under a shaded area or a sun, uh, covered area in the hammocks. We'll have hammocks for rent at the front desk, and then people could also bring their own hammocks and use it. It might, uh, actually help ease up some of the hammocks that are in city park here.
Oh, yeah.
Give them a place for, uh, people to actually make a destination along the trail there. Uh, the cost, obviously, would just be all of us. The maintenance would be Ra-Ra as well. Uh, we would shut off the lights, uh, when we close up shop usually between ten and eleven P.M. along the trail there, and, uh, take any hammocks in that, that we had provided. Uh, also looking to potentially do a little book, uh, place for people to pick up books and, and read while they're there as well. Uh, but great opportunity, I think, to make it a destination along the trail, and in the future, uh, we're looking for artists to potentially do a welcome to Rochester mural along the back of the building, since it is the first, uh, building along the trail as you come in from the east there, so.
Yeah, yeah, we love art here.
On buildings.
On buildings, yeah.
So with the permission of the city, I would, I would request, uh, for approval for us to go ahead and install these posts and get this up and running and functional if, if you see fit.
Councilmember Trent?
Oh, I love this idea. My daughter does the hammock thing and the slack line and every, and everything else, uh, in the parks. And I think a welcome to Rochester along the trail, and many people are on the trail. They don't know what city they're going through, and I think that's really a, a excellent place to let them know that they're going through a town or by a town. Um, so, yeah, I love it.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, it's a, it's, I, I make a motion to, to, uh, approve the hammock, uh, hammock park adjacent to the building.
So a motion by Councilmember Trent? Is there support? Support by Councilmember Jones?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, can, uh, can we make it subject to an agreement with, between the two parties, just so we cover everything for, so there, you, you guys have your liability covered. We can just draw up something quickly and, uh, and keep it official.
Very good. Uh, Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. Love this. This is great, and this, your building is, is, um, shouting for a mural, so I love that idea, um, and just look forward to seeing whatever proposal, and, you know, hopefully that also happens, too, so look forward to seeing more on that.
Councilmember Trent?
Do I need to add subject to the insurance, or?
Yeah, well, you guys kind of gave a head nod, and I said.
Okay.
Uh, Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out, too, our public hearing for our budget is on the seventeenth of this month as well, so, uh, after that, I'll be presenting back to council. We have our budget presentation with City of Rochester Hills in August. So I'll be back again, hopefully, August or September, to present our twenty-five to twenty-seven budget and projections.
All right, thank you.
Looking forward to it. Thank you. Um, next is a consideration of a city manager memo regarding the periodic personnel review of the finance director and the city clerk. Uh, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, so periodically, every year, that's every year, right? It was a long weekend. Um, uh, council reviews the two employees that, there's three of us that, um, are under your purview, but the city clerk and the, um, city treasurer are in the July timeframe, so. I, uh, sit down with them. They do their self-valuation. I do my evaluation. I sent those to you privately, um, in a separate email. Uh, gave my recommendation that both stellar employees, both part, integral parts of the team, what Anthony brings to the table, he's, he's our thinker guy, he's our problem solver, fixer guy, he knows everything that's going on in the community. And Leanne, I'm so proud to say I've been around clerks forty-five years, and we don't have problems in elections in this city. Not too many clerks in the world can say that. And on top of that, then, her, the daily duties, and Leanne's, works at a pace that she goes wild when she gets going on something. It's the dog license thing, trying to come up with the best practices, and she's always there, she's always positive. What do we call you? Harmony? We did this exercise once, and believe it or not, Leanne came out harmony. We all, uh, embraced that, so. Again, I, right now, the maximum that we can recommend for departments, the way the cash worked out, was three percent, so my recommendation is both them, I wish I could give them ten percent, they're that important to the team, but my recommendation would be for three percent. They would be glad to talk, any questions. They could have asked for a closed session for that. None of us felt that was appro, we needed to. If you did, that's fine, I'm sure they would, but, uh, that would be my recommendation.
Council. Councilmember Sage? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Nick, thank you for the, the feedback you provided here, uh, for us, and Leanne and Anthony, thank you for the job, uh, you have done and continue to do. We appreciate it every year. Um, I am proud to make a motion to support, uh, three percent raise for both of you. So motion by Councilmember Sage for three percent raise for both the city clerk and city finance director. Mayor Protem Salvia?
Yep, I will, um, support that motion, um, and I just want to thank both of them for their hard work, and, um, I know, uh, Finance Director Maggio, you're always looking outside the box, trying to find new ways to do things, trying to find new ways to save money, um, so I really appreciate that, and, um, Clerk O'Connor, thank you for your hard work, your detailed work. Um, I know recently there was a, um, suggestion to improve our process to onboard council members, um, and so maybe if you could put that as a goal for after the election, because we know we have one of those coming, um, but I think we can always do better, and I think that'd be great, so appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, can I say this one more thing? I, I wanted to say something from, with Anthony, it's, you all know this, but I put in my report how many awards he wins, and, and he is the most humble human. He doesn't want you to know that, but when I went up to the, the treasurer, the treasurers was Anthony Maggio for the state. He's representing Rochester. When the state police call him to go up to a fire in Escanaba, not for the fire, but to bring the tech sense to, for the drone team and to figure out best practices, he's there on his own time, half the time going up there, so. He is way beyond what he does here. His team with Marcy and their staff, he's groomed them and their team that, so he can do things like that, and I just wanted to recognize it publicly. It's, every time he goes somewhere, it's a City of Rochester. He wears his City of Rochester shirt, and I, and we're proud of that, so. There it is, it's from right now, so. And Leanne does the same thing. She was with, during the whole early election cycle, they called her for advice, and she bucked the trend. She didn't go along with what they said for the earlier elections. She wanted to do it our way. Again, so, and they respect her enough to let her do that, so just those two things. Sorry.
Councilmember Hauser?
Sure, if I can just add to some of the nice words that my colleagues have said. You know, I got to, as a new councilperson, I got to know Anthony, uh, right away, trying to understand the budget, the finances, and he could not have been more accommodating in his schedule and his time and patience, frankly, and letting me know how things work and how the numbers work, and, and Marcy as well, so. Anthony, like they say, if we could give you ten percent, even more, we would, but obviously our hands are tied, and then to Leanne, thank you again for all the work you've done. I've gotten to know her long before I was on planning, long before I was on city council, through the elections, and I'm telling you, um, there's no bigger honor that I have than to work at an election, either at the community house or in here or at one of the other polling stations, I'm telling you. Um, it is absolutely a remarkable day if you're into civics, if you're into making sure that the rules are followed, because Leanne and her team, it's impeccable. No one can ever say a word about the fact that this city runs an election that is absolutely airtight, and so to you and your staff, you do a phenomenal job, so again, thank you very much, okay?
Thank you for.
You're welcome.
Just one more thing, I mean.
Councilmember Trent?
Just go down the line. Um, yeah, so I've had the pleasure of working with Anthony and Marcy on the Budget and Finance Committee, and he's, answers every question, he's very patient, he does an excellent job. He responds quickly when I have questions and emails, and Leanne does as well, and any questions about the cemetery, she's always there for me, too. Anyway, thank you.
Very good. I'd just like to say, as a longtime council member and a longtime employee, uh, thank you for the job you do, and I think, actually, uh, I think I saw Anthony in here Sunday afternoon. Uh, well, he was hardworking while I was playing tennis. But it was Sunday, so, but no, uh, thank you guys for the well, job well done. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. So, so Nick, then, do we do evaluation on you?
That's, I think in, in August or something, so, yep.
Okay. Next is a consideration of awarding L. Anthony Construction to complete curb and gutter replacement in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand dollars and one, two, two-ten and one dollar. Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. Um, so, Mayor and Council, we, um, the asset management committee had reviewed both this and the next agenda item. Um, at that time, we thought that we had all the stakeholders review it, including the HOAs and the neighborhoods that were going to be impacted by this, but that hasn't been fully vetted. So I would like to make a motion to table both item D and item E. So this is for the curb and gutter and for the mill and fill to our July twenty-second meeting.
So there's a motion by the Mayor Protem to table both E and F to our next meeting.
D and E.
D and E.
D and E, yeah.
I'm sorry, D and E.
Second.
Uh, support by Councilmember Hauser. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a consideration of approve a contract with HydroCorp for commercial cross-connection services for the amount of thirty thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars over two years. Mr. City Manager or Mr.?
Yep, Alex.
PPW Director Alec, welcome.
Well, Mayor and Council, I'm sure, as most of you know, um, HydroCorp has been performing cross-connection, um, control services for the city for quite a while now, especially on the commercial side. Um, we have recently having them start doing our residential cross-connection control services, um, was it now two years ago? Um, so our current commercial contract with HydroCorp expires at the end of August, um, so we, we have a proposal from HydroCorp for a two-year contract, um, totaling thirty thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars over those two years, um, starting in September for commercial cross-connection control services.
Council. Mayor Protem Salvia?
I'll make a motion to, um, approve the contract with HydroCorp for our commercial co, cross-connection for two years.
Motion by Mayor Protem Salvia? Support, support by Councilmember Sage. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a consideration of the purpose of cardiac monitors and automated external defibrillators for a hundred and forty thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. Hard to vote against cardiac defibrillators.
Unfortunately, these kind of things give us heartburn when we, uh, big numbers like this, but it's part of doing business in today's world, and we are prepared, and Chief John will talk about, uh,
Chief, welcome.
Why it's important.
Mr. Mayor, Council, um, we try not to surprise you, but this is a surprise, and one of the reasons why is because much of the equipment that we use from the fire department, um, never years ago got put into the revolving equipment fund. And so Anthony's been, and his team have been working hard, along with the rest of the group, to try to go ahead and take care of that. But with that thought in mind, we do not replace equipment at the fire department until it's reached or is reaching the end of life. In this case, the cardiac monitors have not reached the end of life. They're reaching the end of life because, obviously, we wouldn't want to pull it out and use it and go, oops, it didn't work today. So the monitors that we're buying are not anything that you would, um, consider to be normal. Some of the things they do, twelve lead to look, take a look at the heart, the rhythm, how it's working, what's the entrained C.O., um, is in the bloodstream, could indicate different, uh, exposures to chemicals or lack of oxygen, measure the, the O two level in the bloodstream. Also, is the cardiac, be able to shock the heart back into rhythm, and it gives the paramedics the information that they need to be able to properly apply the drugs. And yes, we too send a strip of the, uh, heart rhythm over to the hospital so the doctors can see it. In this is, uh, also the A.A.D.s that you'll see that the police and fire department use, and, uh, we all know, uh, how vital those have been, uh, with our police department and, and the lives that we've saved from that standpoint. Um, to go ahead and take a look at things, we tried to put everything into one package, and in that package is the, the monitors, the A.A.D.s, and along with that is the annual maintenance that needs to go along with those. We wanted to go ahead and take a look and see how we could get the very best price, and the, what we felt and what we saw was by bundling, by bundling it all together. So the price comes out to that hundred and forty thousand. That'll replace two of the monitors and eight A.A.D.s, and we intend to hold on to one of the monitors and do some, um, work for it to be used as, as a backup, if you want to go ahead and call it that, in the event that we have any issues with it. Um, and the reason why we came to the life expectancy is the C.O. on one of the monitors is now not operational, although it's not critical from being able to shock the heart back in the rhythm, it is important to be able, for the paramedics to diagnose, and the repair for that was going to be someplace around nine thousand dollars, just to repair that monitor. And so we felt it was the right time to come to council to go ahead and seek your consideration and potential approval for this package. Anthony, maybe you would like to talk a little bit about how we thought about financing.
Yeah, I'd, just to add on to that, so in there, there's, um, a few different finance options. Um, some of the new members on council may not realize, but a few years ago, we did, uh, put out an RFP and look for financing services, and Chief Financial Credit Union was the, uh, the best rate, and they take basically whatever term you want, and they'll add between two and two and a half percent, and that's the rate that they'll charge you for financing. Uh, at the time, we had looked at a hundred and fifty thousand and above at, for the financing level, and anything below that, we would look at just doing as a cash purchase. As this is right around the one hundred and fifty mark, I included both options, uh, from Chief Financial, who our, uh, agreement with them goes through the end of this year, uh, and as well as the manufacturer, and then just the outright, uh, cash purchase, uh, since it was just right around, uh, that amount. So any questions on the financing or anything from that, I'm happy to answer that, but we have those. had looked at $150,000 and above at for the financing level. And anything below that, we would look at just doing as a cash purchase. As this is right around the 150 mark, I included both options from Chief Financial, who our agreement with them goes through the end of this year, and as well as the manufacturer, and then just the outright cash purchase, since it was just right around that amount. So any questions on the financing or anything from that, I'm happy to answer that. But we have those options for you tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Council. Councilmember, Mayor Protem Salvia.
Pointing down here. So, so regarding the financing, so currently, we're making about 5%, maybe a little bit more on our general fund money, right?
Correct.
And then the financing, the rate was about six?
Six, eight.
Six, eight, nine. So almost 7%. So.
And a little over eight from the other company. It was like 8.08.
Right. So seven or eight percent. So in round numbers, you know, we're not, we're not making that on our current general fund money.
Correct.
And then the second data point that I looked at was we, when we approved our budget, we had about $220,000 in general fund dollars to the good.
Correct.
So I support this, but I think we should use general, general fund dollars, not finance this. I don't think we need to take on debt. This is something clearly we need to replace and do for the city. So I'll, I'll let Council deliberate.
Councilmember King.
I saw the, the maintenance contract is, it's a four-years package, and then the financing options were for 72 months. I'm just curious what the estimated life of the equipment is.
The lifespan, I think the equipment, and I brought my ace in the hole, my paramedic code, but Chris, about six years?
About seven to 10.
Seven to 10 years. And, and we're reaching that 10-year point with the current ones we have.
Actually, we're at 12, almost.
Oh, okay. Time flies when you're getting old.
It does.
Yeah.
Time flies when you're having heart attacks.
Do you think with the four-year maintenance contract that we would look to extend it? Or what would be?
Well, we, there's required maintenance and calibrations. We've been doing that, but we've been doing it separately. And, you know, that's why we took a look at rolling it into one large package to see if, and it seemed like we got a better deal for it. So we'll continue to do the maintenance. And, and we'll have to break that out of that bundled price. But that would be contained within that $140,000 and change to go ahead and do the four years of maintenance. They won't go past four years for us right now. But at least it'll be for the first four years.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Trent.
I always ask this, is, what is it, I mean, what do you do with the old equipment? Is that?
They use them basically as wheel chocks.
What's that mean?
That means they're, no value.
They're done. Oh, there's no value in that.
If there were, we would keep them and, and use them.
I see. You can't take that risk.
Yeah. And I don't mean to be a smart aleck, but they, they're just, they have no value.
I see.
Can't go ahead and sell them or anything along those lines.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Councilmember Jones.
I think you might have alluded to this when you first were talking about it. But since you're good about giving us heads up on things, so to me, this should have been included in your budget. I'm just curious.
Yeah. So there's, there's things that we have on our radar, but we don't put into the budget because we continue to push them off. An example is, you've all helped us out with the SCBA Scott Air Packs. If you remember, last year, you approved buying air bottles because our air bottles were expiring. We have SCBAs that we've written grants now for three times that we don't have in the budget. We have a air compressor system that's on its last leg that we have put into a grant request, which is about $80,000 that we may have to come to you to ask to go ahead and do that. One of the things that we try to do is, is, is push off these large ticket purchases until we actually need them. And so it's not something that we can anticipate. And that's in essence, why the revolving equipment fund is there to help us out with those items.
But this would not be coming out of that. This would be coming out of general fund. Do I have that understanding right, Anthony?
Correct. For the cash purchase, that, that would be the, the request, because revolving equipment doesn't have enough cash flow to, to support the large purchases. So we do either additional transfer or just out of general fund either way. And then, since these pieces of equipment getting more specialized and more expensive as time goes on, they've now been added into the revolving equipment fleet, you know, replacement plan. So now there's two items for the two monitors. So we'll start putting money in annually each year for that, just like we would for an ambulance or a police vehicle, any of those. So that'll be in there now going forward.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
So motion, Councilmember Hauser.
I would say motion to, so consistent with Mayor Protem Salvia, to take it out of the general fund and not necessarily finance it. That would be my motion for the purchase of this equipment.
Purchase these through general financing without.
General fund.
Without financing.
Yes.
Motion by Councilmember Hauser.
Support.
Support by Mayor Protem Salvia. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Next is the receipt of the check register. Any questions? And now a report for the various boards and commissions. First, there's a report from Ra-Ra. Councilmember King.
Thank you. All right. So I, revenue for the year through May, they're doing really well, was up about $228,000. But primarily, I think it's a pull ahead of some of the summer camp, the timing of payments. Also, some additional funds from camps and sports. We've been able to award 20 scholarships, with 15 going towards camps and five for other learning opportunities. They are, we just approved to replace the front walk and outside of the building. So hopefully, it'll look as good as it does out here. But some of the, some of the, you know, cement blocks were just falling apart, chipped. There were holes in it. And they were a really odd shape. So it was going to be difficult just to replace those. Obviously, you saw the hammocks. That's really exciting. And then concessions at Hall Backfield are open. I don't know if you want to comment on the hours for that? I did not note that. Or if you have any idea?
You can say no.
Put him on the spot.
I don't have the schedule offhand for the concessions. It, it's based off of our game schedule. So we have adaptive softball that's playing games out there. And we also have T-ball. And then actually, starting next Monday, will be the first time in many, many years that we'll have adult softball out there. So that'll be out there for the next seven weeks for the season. We'll be utilizing the lights out there.
Yes.
Thank you for getting those lights running again. And concessions will be open for those as well.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Salvia.
So actually, I had a question on that. So is there any way from administration standpoint, can we put any sort of signage on that building? People don't even know what it is. It's a concession stand, or I mean, even if we start with something temporary this year, and, and those bathrooms, I had a question recently about the bathrooms in there. Are those bathrooms open all the time or just when there's games? City Manager?
I'm not sure.
Alec.
Alec.
Just during games.
Just during games. Because.
We, well, because we have three bathrooms in the park. It's maintenance problems. It's security problems. So we have enough bathrooms in the park that we don't need another one to take care of on a jump, on a daily basis, anyway.
Councilmember Jones.
Just as a side note, thinking ahead, once the skate park opens, we might want to consider having that open more than just when there's.
Absolutely.
And I also, as a side note, have a schedule of when the concession stands open. So if someone wants to go for a beverage or.
So maybe we can post it.
I can send it to you all.
Could we post it?
Yeah, we could post it. Yes, yes. And we're excited about it being open. And, and like Dave was saying earlier, where it's not like it's to be a moneymaker. But if we pay for the staff person there, then it's worthwhile.
Sure. Thank you. Okay. Anything else?
One more. But I was also going to say on the bathroom topic with the Memorial Grove Park, that, you know, we might also want to consider, especially since it's, you know, more adaptive use and for handicap.
True.
Having that a little bit closer for the bathroom.
Good.
And then the last thing, I think it was the, the city had used Amy Cell to do a comp study. And Ra-Ra, or was it the City of Rochester Hills, I believe?
Rochester Hills.
Rochester Hills. Okay. So they had engaged with Amy Cell to do a comp study last year. Ra-Ra had been, was supposed to be included and accidentally was not included. So they just completed the comp study. The results of which, most of the positions were anywhere from about 2% to close to 10% below kind of the midpoint of neighboring communities and for similar roles of that, you know, these positions. So, you know, recreation supervisors, camp directors, you know, the like. So there were adjustments proposed to bring the positions that needed to. There were a couple that were on pace. There was one that was like 20% below kind of the market. So there was a proposal made to bring the positions in line with the midpoint from that study, which we passed for 2024. And then we said we were going to revisit what the annual increase was, I think, each year.
Very good.
I have a question. It's probably more, because when I was sitting on it, wasn't that review just done and everybody increased a couple of years ago? I was sat on when this process happened. Am I wrong?
So it was originally done 2018 by McGrath. That was the original study. And based off of that fully comprehensive study, it was recommended that every five years, we go back out and just make sure that we, that our rates are, for employees are, are still meeting the market value. Obviously, there's been a lot of changes with COVID and inflation. So it was really a good opportunity for us to go out and see what those neighboring communities are offering as far as salaries go. And it, it did come back a little low, but we have been doing a good job based off of that study. We not only incorporated an annual increase based off of cost of living, but we also had performance evaluations that were done annually. And we had a catch-up period there where, I mean, the last study, we were 20% below from all of our employees. And within the last two years, we were actually able to get everybody up within the salary bands. So this was an opportunity to make sure that we stay within those bands and can keep some of the very great staff that we have currently on staff with us from going to other communities. So we were compared to Novi, Canton, Livonia, Troy was in the study, Ann Arbor was there. So it gave us a, a large scope of similar organizations to really get a good gauge on what the market value is. So, yeah, it, it was a little, I would say it was a little low when we, we didn't really know what we were getting ourselves into. But many of these communities have been putting out job postings, and some of our staff have been chasing some of those higher salaries and moving on. So I think this gives us a chance to be very competitive. And, and if we do have staff leave, we can, you know, get some highly qualified individuals to come and, and work for Ra-Ra.
Thank you.
Thank you. All set.
That's it.
All right. Thank you. Next, next is a report, yeah, thank you, Dave. Next is a report from the Historical Commission, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple meetings ago, we mentioned confirmation that we know there are four Revolutionary War soldiers buried in Mount Avon Cemetery. And we were approached by the Daughters of the American Revolution to start planning for America 250 in 2026, I believe it is, and some kind of celebration. So they understand that some of these things take time, and they're looking for some support from the city. They will make a presentation to the Historical Commission, either at the July or August meeting. And then when appropriate, we will bring that presentation to Council.
Next is a report from the OPC, Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yes. So the OPC, it was all about the budget. The OPC budget will be coming before us at our next meeting, July 22. You all receive the details in the City Managers' packet. And Tim Suave, the Long Term Finance Director, is retiring. So August 9 will be his last day. He used to work at Oakland County. So he has done a fantastic job and just really brought a lot of knowledge to the OPC. They now use the same software that we use at the City of Rochester, so the BSNA software. So I think that'll help the transition immensely that he's put a lot of things in place and the OPC is in great shape.
Very good. I, I just want to say I served when Tim was there. He did a great job. He will be missed. Next, a report from the Planning Commission, Councilmember Hauser.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On July 1, 2024, we had our Planning Commission meeting. There were four projects that we discussed. One was the Eastman. We approved some outdoor seating and a patio expansion behind the, the structure there. Second was, we had a very small issue, parking in lieu over on 307 South Main Street. If those who don't know the address, that's the new sandwich bookstore shop that's opening up on Main Street. So it was payment in lieu of one parking spot. Then we had a presentation by the DDA as it pertains to the gram. And they came in with some design changes that they had had to the facility, which continues to look fantastic. But Planning Commission definitely raised some concerns and suggested that they keep the covered parking area. It seemed to be a feature that a lot of us liked. However, for certain issues, well, for certain circumstances that they had based on encroachment, they had to pull that off. And then there was also an encroachment issue on the east side of the structure by the fire station. So in order to keep this thing moving, they're going to continue to, they're going to close on the sale, but they're going to come back with revised drawing. But also, they've committed to going to zoning to the extent that they have to, to make certain that that covered parking is there. And also that the encroachment issue, I think it's a seven-foot encroachment issue over onto Water Street there. And based on conversations with the DDA, they were very optimistic that they would be able to get those across the finish line. So that's moving along very well. And again, that project continues to look very, very nice with each iteration. And finally, we had a conversation about a proposed zoning amendment. And I think it's fair to say our master plan needs a little love and attention. And one of those things that came out was some discrepancies as it pertains while discussing the solar onyx project. And there was a suggestion that maybe we fix some of the language in one of the ordinances. And rather than do a surgical approach, the Planning Commission wanted to do a more holistic approach with more input and more feedback from the other commissioners as well as city administration. So we put that on pause. And rather than, again, just go line by line each particular day, we're going to commit again to taking a deeper look into that master plan and making sure that it's all consistent. Fortunately, it wasn't anything that thwarted the project or impeded development, but it does need to be addressed. And the Planning Commission, I think even City Council, is committed to making sure that master plan gets back on track and is consistent from page one through the end of the book. And that's it.
Councilmember King.
Just a question for you with planning. So I know when that last master plan was approved, there were new zoning, like categories that were created. And we had to basically write the ordinance for those new zoning classifications. A number of them went through planning. I don't know if any of them ever reached City Council and were approved. Do you know, like, that's where that is in progress?
I will try my best, but I'm going to ask City Manager to bail me out here, but I certainly don't.
We are.
Actually, you wanted just to save the embarrassment and take it over.
Absolutely. So we have two more categories to go, RM1 and RM2, which happened to be the solar onyx discussion. There was a, the original master plan called for putting those two districts together into one. I see a lot of problems with that. So that's going to go to Planning Commission next month. Then we'll come here. And then we're going to have a joint meeting of the Planning Commission, City Council over all the districts again, in a synopsis. We'll do it over one or two meetings, and then come back for a single, there's a couple of ways we could do it. We could have waited for people to come in and ask for rezoning to the new districts. Or we can look at a mass rezoning. It's, it's yeoman's work where everybody in the city gets, I noticed it says, your property will now be rezoned. This doesn't, here's the differences between the districts. And you could do that legally in one fell swoop with one action. So Planning Commission wanted to go that route. We committed to have that done by the end of the year. So that's our goal is to, and then on top of that, to make it make sense, you have to rewrite the zoning ordinance to match that cadence, that the intents are all put in there. So into the year, we'll have this thing wrapped up with the new districts.
And I think we got a commitment from our city planner, Vidya, to shepherd this down.
And that was it for the updates.
Very good. Councilmember Jones?
I'm just building on that master plan for a minute. So just curious, because there's
I have a Dinosaur Hill update.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Could I do that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I did speak with the board chair, Nick Gatos, of the Dinosaur Hill Nature Preserve. And we discussed a couple of things, mainly the discussion was around the Dinosaur Hill 50-year celebration. And we discussed the city wanting to celebrate this to honor the founders of Dinosaur Hill Nature Preserve and the many people who have dedicated hundreds of hours over the past 50 years. And he agreed that that was a fabulous idea, but they don't have the bench depth or bandwidth to, to do this event. Now, it's not going to be a big event, but we are going to, but we're going to utilize City Beautiful Commission. I talked to Janine Krupp today as well, and she will present to her board on her next meeting to, about donating some funds and being, and creating this committee that would include me, Nick Gatos, Janine, and at least one or two other people to have this event in October, because October 1974 was when the property was either dedicated, or we'll find out. I'm not sure exactly how it all went down, but it was October 1974. So we're looking at the mid-October evening date at Dinosaur Hill. It will be by RSVP, because I have had so many people come to me and ask me and tell, and ask me about how we're going to do the celebration. They have all these fond memories and express interest in this of the years of as children, as volunteers, and, and things like that. So there will be a slideshow of the history of Dinosaur Hill by, by the decade. Summarized highlights will be shown. Ginger Kettleston, who was one of the founders and still lives next door to Dinosaur Hill, is working on gathering the information on the list of founders, board members, and volunteers. And Nick Gatos will be here on August 26th to present the annual reporting of, of Dinosaur Hill.
Good.
The same, August 25th, 26th. He's coming here to us at the City Council, August 26th, about the annual, the annual report that they, that is, they're contracted to do yearly, like OPC and the other organizations that we help, that we help, that we help buildings.
That will be a novel experience.
Yeah. So if anybody has any questions ahead of time, please send me them. I have sent him my request already of what I, I would, would like to see in the presentation.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, is there any other public comment tonight? Ms. Peterson, welcome.
Ah, thank you, ma'am. So real quick, I have a question. Did we ever get the camera installed on the upper deck of the, on the parking deck here on Walnut? The other camera.
Mr. City Manager?
No.
No. So in light of the shooting, and this was a request back when I was on council, I would expect that we'd get a camera up there, because it's very easy to walk up those stairs and not have any police know that that's happening, and we have a lot of people in a small area with events right there. So I think in light of that, so we don't have a tragedy, that we give cameras to the police on that upper level. So I've been up there many times, and we talked about this because of the fact that we had a lot of people goofing off up there, and you can't see anybody in the one corridor. So, okay? Thank you very much.
Which, which deck?
Councilmember Hauser?
I'm sorry.
This one, the west deck.
The west deck, okay.
That's the west deck. So there is one camera at a different angle, but not at the one angle where everyone hides. And there's been a ton of graffiti still up there, and so we don't, because we have dancing in the street right there, anyone could go in there with a backpack and just open fire down below. And I don't want that to happen here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Brian, I see someone with a hand up, up there.
Yes, there's a caller, 891.
Yep. You need to mute, unmute.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Why don't you identify yourself for the record and welcome.
Oh, thank you. My name's Claire Ahern, and I'm at 630 Woodward Avenue.
Okay, welcome.
And this, this, this is in regards to the public bathroom at Hallback Field. I own a business that's right next to the smaller baseball field across from Hallback. And I am running into a lot of problems with that small baseball field and the games going on where people have to come over and use my restroom. And I've ran into quite a few problems where even though I have signs on my door that say no public restroom, people come in and they know where my bathroom is, and they will sneak into my gym, and then they'll bring their kids over, and I can't stop it. And a woman the other day came in, and I explained to her that if I let one person and I have to let everybody come over there, and she started to scream at me that her little girl was going to go to the bathroom in her pants. And I had no idea how to explain to her where the base, where the bathrooms were in the park. And that smaller field gets used a lot for baseball games. And I'm not sure how to handle this anymore. And I, I don't want my business to have a bad reputation, but I have to take care of my bathroom, I have to supply everything, and then I have multiple people, adults and children, running over to my gym, coming in my side door before I can even catch them. And I can't lock the doors.
I understand. Mr. City Manager, is that baseball primarily in the evening?
Mm-hmm.
So maybe that's when, maybe we can take a look at it. Try to help her out.
And, and maybe if we could, whatever we decide, post the hours on the bathroom when it's open. If it's not open 100% of the time, we, we need some information. I mean, right now, it's just a brick building. People don't even know what, what happens in there.
And in theory, if there's a baseball game, there's two teams and lots of parents and grandparents, and it's a lot of people. I guess there's not a bathroom noticeable right there. Okay?
Correct. And, and, and there really are a lot of people watching baseball at that small, that small field. And I am open till 7:30 at nighttime, so I get a lot of people that try to keep coming over. And I don't know what to tell them. I feel terrible when I have to turn them away, but I don't know what else I'm supposed to do.
I understand that's, that's an issue. Did you have a comment?
So I know there are, we, we do the scheduling for both of those fields. So I know there is a lot of practices out there, and typically, the bathrooms are not open for that. Our games, we do have recreation aids that are out there that can open the bathrooms across the street or close them. I know pre-COVID, we did have those bathrooms open. They were being opened and closed by the police department, I believe. So I don't know if that's an option as well, but I think more of the issue is people don't want to run their kids across the street from the small field.
Oh, okay. So they would, they would prefer to go into the DPW building. They don't want to go across the street.
Correct. And I think that's been much of the issue. I don't know if there's an opportunity to potentially put porta-potties out there during season.
Yeah. Yeah, you got to have something, it would seem like.
Porta-potties is a great idea.
Maybe administration could take a look at that.
Yeah. Porta-potties are great.
Got to have, it seemed like you had to have something there.
Yep.
Because, yeah, what if her business was closed, then what?
Yeah.
It's, it's, I'll look into it, but it's been there like this for 50 years, and it's never been an issue before, so, but we'll look into it. We can't open DPW, that's, but we'll take, certainly take a look at it, so. And maybe porta-potties are the answer.
Yeah.
They're made quite nice ones now, and we had to figure a way to pay for those, but that might be the answer, the, the right there. Because I agree with David, you don't want to walk across that street with little kids. Okay, we'll look into it.
And not to, not to bring up the skate park again, but I think we have to think ahead because that will have a lot of traffic, different hours during the day, during the week.
Definitely, we'll take all that into consideration.
And to your point about the park, the new park, the handicap. Yeah, so.
Okay.
Thank you for your comment.
Thanks, Claire.
Thank you.
Anything further? Chief?
Some good news. I get just spent $140,000, but early this morning, I sent a note up to the state, and we got our notice on our BRET grant, which is building resiliency in communities. And we've made it through the first hurdle for our engineering study in regards to the flooding. No guarantees, but we're looking pretty good, like we may get that grant accepted. And if we do, that'll help pay for the engineering for that, and then potentially we'll have a, a very good opportunity to get the money to make the correction. So I'd like to deliver at least a little good news along with what we already did. So we should hear something in the next four to six weeks.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Onto General Miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager.
I just have one weird clarification. So we had a bunch of people come in to the counter to pay a ticket on a form that wasn't our, written by the City of Rochester. So dug into it a little bit, Marcy did, and there, people were getting tickets parking in the Royal Park Hotel parking lot. So Christie called them, Sarah there, and said, what's going on? If anybody's followed the paper, Little Caesar's just got called out heavily for having a private police department on every lot they own, they write tickets. They're not, and Mayor Duggan came out and the police chief came out and said, we're not writing those tickets. That's private, on private property. So same thing, Royal Park is now charging you $7 if you want to park on their property. And if you don't, it's, and it's run through the valet service evidently. They are the enforcers, so they'll immediately write a ticket. You can go inside and pay $7, or if they're not open anymore, or you get there in odd hours, you have to come back to pay it. They came to City Hall to pay it, and we're like, we have nothing to do with this. So even our own events, so Christie's dealing with, we have the business development meeting, we have the Kris Kringle Market, not Kris Kringle Market, but the business holiday market. Everybody that comes there, from now on, if you go eat dinner there, you're going to get charged $7, so.
How can they enforce that?
Really?
Yeah, and we said.
Even if you're paying?
Yeah, so if you go on.
How do they enforce that?
They are, if you don't, I can say on TV, it's their problem, not ours. So we will not.
Right, I'm just saying, they, they give me a $7 ticket. How do they make me pay that? Mr. City Attorney?
He's not saying it.
Oh, okay. They can't, right?
Yeah, they can't. But people are paying, so if you go for dinner there or do anything there, you, they're asking you to pay $7, so. It's not us, just so everybody knows, it's not anything to do with us. We didn't tell them to do it.
Wow.
Kind of, in some hotels.
Drive business away?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Councilmember King?
I will say, in their defense, you go there for an event, or you go there for dinner, and you can't get parking. It, like, it's full. The, the par, the valet is full, everything is full, there's nowhere to park. It happens all the time. I've had to park over at the library and, and walk over when I've gone for events. So I understand wanting to, to regulate it. We charge for our parking garages, right? It does seem like they should have control over their parking, but for people to come past.
They're going to drive, they're going to drive business away.
They are. They're going to drive business away.
It's not Rochester.
I just.
Or you get it validated when you go to dinner, you know, and they stick it. Okay, well, that's, that's their decision, right?
Thank you for the information.
That's great news.
Thank you. Now we know.
That's all I have. Hope everybody had a great fourth.
Yeah. City Clerk? Madam Clerk?
All's quiet. Scary quiet.
The Western Front. Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember King? Mayor Protemsalvia?
I do, I have a few things. So in the spirit of everyone's out and about on our trails, so I was talking to a biker on the trail, and he brought up a point about the, you know, the thing that goes in the middle of the crosswalk, City Manager, where you're crossing across from the Royal Park. Where we've got our nice flashers, and then we have the thing in the middle, which I think is very helpful. It helps cars actually see it. But his point as a biker is there's no reflective material towards the biker. So he has almost run into it several times because he doesn't see it, he looks past it. So his suggestion was some, something reflective so that out of your eye, you see that.
We got the thumbs up, we can take care of that.
Okay, thank you. I thought that was a reasonable request.
It is.
Also wanted to thank administration, I'm thinking this is probably Marcy, that put this in our tax bill. So love seeing, you know, letting residents know where their, some of their tax dollars are going to work, and hopefully some of the state tax dollars going for the community house, skate park, gram, new pathways. This is great, plus all the infrastructure. There was an interesting article in the Michigan Municipal League, which I'm sure all of council got, talking about marijuana in Michigan. So I just kind of want to keep that issue in front of all of us. It was last August that we got that surprise group of signatures. So I think we're all hoping that the residents voted very loudly, and we don't have that surprise, but, you know, Michigan is still the number one place to buy marijuana in the country. So just keep that on everyone's radar. And then some fun news, I think Ernie's on the Creek is having their soft opening this week.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Very good. Councilmember Sage? Nothing this evening, sir. Councilmember Jones?
Just a couple of things. I actually have the concession schedule with me, so if anybody wants to know, it's only certain days a week. So that means only certain days a week that bathrooms open also. Back to the bathroom discussion. There is an event that is being put on by the Rochester Auburn Hills Community Coalition and some others on Sunday, July 28th. It's Keeping the Me in Mental Health. Raya is also participating. There's going to have a lot of information regarding mental health, a lot of fun for the kids, rock climbing wall, yoga, therapy, dogs, et cetera, et cetera. That will be at Van Hoozen Farm in the Calf Barn on July 28th. The cornhole is up in one.
And Jason just said, lots of people playing.
So that's exciting, yes. People are playing it. If anyone wants to meet up for a game or two, I've called Cornhole. City Beautiful Commission is doing a, a little gathering on Wednesday, this Wednesday at 7:00 PM. So if you want to play a game at Cornhole, they will be there. And then just to keep it, I've mentioned this before, and I just kind of want to keep it out there, that I do have concern about the, all the obstructions on Main Street, and both the comfort of walking down the street and potential liability. Now that the restaurants are all set up for summer dining, there are a couple spots on Main Street that you barely can get through between the planters and the extended area for the restaurants. And then also just all the signs on Main Street. I think it makes it complicated, so I'll just continue to put that out there, that it's a concern of mine. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Trent?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. So because of the past discussions and many others regarding feral cats, I did some, made a few calls, and I talked to Mayor Bixson about having Cheryl Phillips and Kim, Kim, Kim Kins, a past executive director of the Humane Society of McComb, to present a solution they have used in other municipalities. It's not unknown. It's called TNR, or trap, neuter and release. And they will have a brief Q and A also for any of us who have questions. I told them five minutes for the presentation, just took a stab at it.
I think, I think, we think that's an issue in town.
Yeah.
So I think to have a presentation is good.
Just for the record, we, we know about all that, and our neighborhood, mine's the big one, we don't want them back. You, just because you neuter them, does, you might not get any more, but we have 13 running around all the time. The people want them trapped and relocated.
I realize, I do realize that.
Release, it's relocated, if that's the R, but you're not solving it by. Release, it's relocated, if that's the R, but you're not solving it by.
But I, there's the neuter, that's what the discussion it will be about. I get it. So I, but, so I have another thing to say after this. Okay.
Page two.
Okay. For the issue of chronic flooding on Griggs and other places that we've discussed, I researched and found that Jim Nash, our Water Resources Communit, Commissioner of Oakland County, has solutions and insights on how to mitigate the problem with, I know yours truly, rain gardens, bio swells, and rain barrels. And I discussed this with the mayor, another, when we were talking about the feral cats, and he's, and he said that Jim Nash had come and spoken with us before, and he's done a short, and he will come, he can come back and do a short presentation. They do have a rebate program, but I don't know if they have one now for, for rain gardens and bio swells, but they have all the information about, they do work, and depending on, and then other waters. You know, I think we should hear from a water commissioner about the whole, all the stormwater issues, because it is our number one pollutant of groundwater, and 40% of us get our, we get our water from the groundwater. So the more we help pollute it, the more we're polluting our own water.
So those rain barrels and programs, is that something that Oakland County would help with resources, or the residents have to do?
I think they're Oakland County.
Or the city has to use it? Where's the money come from?
Well, what I saw, and I was watching a video, and I was looking at some other things, it is a rebate program from Oakland County. Now, I don't know about the rain barrels, but I, they were rain gardens, so I thought if he comes, then we could encourage Oakland County to create these rebates and show interest that I think they would get a lot more of what they're looking for is cleaner stormwater and less, and less flooding and more education. Yeah.
Sounds good.
So that was it.
I think he was out here before, years and years ago, talking about, we were trying to, again, trying to get off the Detroit Water, anything, so that's been a long-going process.
Oh, and one more thing. If you're hanging out at the cemetery or visiting the cemetery, we have a beautiful, 50-plus plants have been planted by some sweet little elves.
Thank you.
And I was jogging there the other day, and I had some people there who are living the, just down the street, and they were commenting on the fact, they were really grateful that it was there, and they were grateful that the, we, the little elves put signs on exactly what plants those are, that the deer don't like, but are also Michigan native, with some annuals as well. Thank you for that.
Thanks for doing that. Councilmember Hauser?
No, nothing this evening. Thank you, sir.
No, no.
No.
Yeah, the only thing I had to say is, in two weeks is the rah-rah signature event, the tennis tournament is coming up, so you can check it out, adults and juniors. It's coming up.
Get to know that was a signature. I know, I'm like, I heard there was a home run derby.
Let me rephrase that. In my opinion, it's a signature event. And then we are going to go into closed session without coming back, so we need a motion to go into closed session.
Right, before you do that, I just got reminded that if, I sent something out late